Good morning. Today is March 11th, 2015, 10 o'clock. We are starting our county commission meeting. At this time, I will have call to order. Mr. Eldon Callan?
Here.
Mr. Ed Hawkins?
Here.
Great. At this time, ask if we rise for a moment of silent meditation and then we'll pledge to the flag. Thank you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting out, good news, there is no snow. Okay, consensus and approval?
All right, today we have no exonerations, but we do have a request for replacement ticket on number 1508, Dennis A. Jones. The name is today, voucher of general county fund, $304,448.25. General County purchasing card, $13,165. Full severance fund, $2,741.11. GAN monthly, $8,002,9361. Chestnut Ridge Park, $370,44. Mason Dixon Park, $544,66. Mason Dixon purchasing card, $128,76. Sessors valuation fund, $873,97. Sessors valuation purchasing card, $168,20. Magistrate Court purchasing card, $11,705,67. 911 cash, $346,90, for a total of $342,781.7 cents.
The replacement ticket is for what year?
2014.
2014.
Move for approval.
Second.
You've properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes? Okay, at this time, we will have public comment. I ask you to stand, come forward, or sit by the table, whichever you'd like to do. State your name, your address. We will not respond until after all the public comments are done. So at this time, I open up the public comment. Is there anyone like wishing to speak? Yes, sir. If you want to sit there, that's...
That would be okay, yeah, with this thing?
Sure.
With this thing? I have some information I'd like to give you all, sir.
Okay.
You can follow along with me.
Okay, if you want to state your name and address, so Janet can...
Yes, George Papandrus, Morgantown, 426 Jefferson Street. Yes, sir?
Yeah, be my guest.
Thank you. Naturally, feel free to follow along with that. Probably pretty much everything I'm going to say is going to be on that.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field those later. I'd like to thank the commissioners for allowing me to present here today. I'd originally planned to come before you simply to... Turn this thing off here, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Technologically challenged here.
I think all of us over 30 have... Oh, I better be careful I say that, yeah.
Anyway, again, thank you for allowing me to come in here today and speak. I'd originally planned to come before you today simply to acquaint you with the depths that the city government has sunk into in order to ensure their control of our city. As I prepared, though, I studied almost 2,000 pages of official documents, transcripts, and articles, as well as listening to hours of audio and video. What follows are not only my opinions based on facts, public meetings, official documents, and news reports, but also a small sample of the documents that I believe demonstrate abuse of power on the part of many of the current city council. A recent letter to the editor quoted a famous statesman to say, quote, "All tyranny needs to gain a foothold was for people of good conscience to remain silent." It then defined tyranny as "the arbitrary or unrestrained exercise of power," despotic abuse of authority. We should all take a few moments to reflect on that. Many of us in this room have chosen to serve our community. More often than not, that drive to serve comes from a desire to right a wrong. The citizens of Morgantown have watched in shock as Morgantown City Council has ignored its charter, as well as inconvenient state and federal law for petty, personal, political gain in its survival. Their actions have demonstrated beyond any reasonable doubt that they cannot be trusted or relied upon to police themselves, or to put the interests of the community before personal benefit. Who, then, is Morgantown to turn to? I'm here today to ask for your help. Council should not be above the law, but they act that way. Some in this room may know that they have openly bragged about having the votes to push their self-serving agendas, clearly indicating consensus outside of public scrutiny or illegal meetings. As evidenced by the FOIA submitted by former mayor Jim Manila, they've clearly stepped outside of their authority by circumventing the chain of command within the city. And this, too, is grounds for removal from council. All of this and more demonstrates a pattern of abuse of authority. Before I explain, I'd like to share with you several relevant definitions. The first is gerrymandering. Gerrymandering is a practice that attempts to establish a political advantage for a particular party or group by manipulating district boundaries. The second is corruption. Corruption is the dishonest or fraudulent conduct by those in power. The Morgantown City Charter charges the wards and boundaries commission to adjust ward boundaries in order to achieve, quote, "as nearly as practicable the same number of qualified voters in each ward." Commission's recent proposal equalized wards four and seven within nine voters. The gerrymandered plan engineered by council remained 327 voters apart, in no way meeting the requirements of the charter. Council's recent decision to ignore the impartial findings of the wards and boundaries commission that met the spirit as well as the requirements of the city charter was not a random decision. In fact, it was designed to not only prevent two incumbent counselors from facing each other in the upcoming election, but was carefully crafted to remove one counselor's opponent from their ward, the definition of gerrymandering. Any unbiased investigation of the facts of this case was all played out in real time on TV, radio, and in the newspaper, and will show their actions for exactly what they were, manipulation for personal gain. Now, attached in the packet that I gave you, you'll find, actually, 10, I added another one, 10 relevant exhibits concerning the wards and boundaries gerrymandering issue. This is, and I can't stress this enough, this is far from all the information available, but is included just to demonstrate the importance of this issue. The official transcripts of the relevant city council meetings regarding this issue are an embarrassment to the concept of democracy. It's no wonder there is so little trust in public officials. And I think it clearly demonstrates why there needs to be a thorough investigation of what certainly appears to be the manipulation of boundaries for political gain, again, gerrymandering. I've not gone into detail on several of the other issues that are current and that are relevant and that demonstrate a pattern here in Morgantown. Those would be the truck ban fantasy that went on here a few months ago. There will be another time for that, as well as the issue of direct contact between council and staff other than the manager, which is also an affront to the city charter. Exhibit numbers are in the top right corner of the pages that I've given you, so if you want to follow along briefly, I'm not going to read them to you, I'm just going to tell you why they were included. Exhibit number one is relevant excerpts from West Virginia code demonstrating that public officials may not use their office for private gain and may not vote on any matter where they have a financial interest, that interest in this case being that they're paid for these meetings. Exhibit two are relevant excerpts from the Morgantown City Charter defining that the position of the mayor is ceremonial, not administrative, and there are no administrative duties for the mayor. Also, that the prohibition of voting on any matter with direct or indirect financial interest or personal interest. And the penalty of removal for any member violating this section is defined in there also, and it goes on to say that the violation for dealing with any city personnel other than the manager is removal from office, and, quote, "that a council member shall forfeit his office if he violates any express prohibition of this charter." Exhibit three are relevant excerpts from Morgantown City Charter defining the position of the city manager as chief administrative officer of the city, and it goes on to say that he shall see that all laws, ordinances, and provisions of this charter and acts of the council are subject to enforcement by him, are faithfully executed and enforced. Exhibit four begins the minutes that I've included for you of the wards and boundaries commission. The first one is for January 9th, 2014, where Commissioner Panrel references the conduct of council members attending the last work session and brings that matter, or indicates to his board that he has brought that matter before the city manager. Apparently, it was something less than stellar. Later on in that, we'll see that there was a unanimous approval to extend the seventh ward boundary into the fourth ward, which is what we're really talking about here, and that passed on a 7-0 vote. The next meeting of the wards and boundaries is exhibit five, and that was approved on October 14th, 2014. Once again, there was a motion to vote to add 414 voters to the seventh ward from the fourth ward to fix the disparity in the number of voters. Once again, for the second time, it was unanimously approved, 7-0. Exhibit number six is the wards and boundaries commission meeting November 12th, 2014. Things start to take a little bit of a turn here. This is where Jenny Saleen, current mayor of Morgantown, addresses the wards and boundaries commission to ask that they review a legal case based on pitting incumbents against each other, see if it has relevance here in Morgantown. Linda Little, the city clerk, followed up with the city attorney, asking for his opinion on the case referenced by Saleen. City attorney ultimately found that the wards and boundaries is fully within its duties and authority to do the work that they're doing, and what they're doing does not constitute gerrymandering. Exhibit seven is the next wards and boundaries commission meeting, minutes from November 19th, where Linda Little warns, or Chairman Donaldson from the wards and bound, that he has to stay focused on wards and bounds duties when he tries to review the fourth and seventh ward boundary solely because of the effect on two council members. Now, my interpretation here, and I think it's pretty clear, that this shows a change in his thinking simply because of influence from city council members, probably more notably, that would be Jenny Saleen. The next exhibit is exhibit number eight, which is wards and boundaries commission meeting November 19. Linda Little has asked Chairman Donaldson to jot down in a note, or in a letter form, his understanding of the changes that are going to be made to that ward, which he does. And in that letter, he clearly demonstrates, and all this stuff is highlighted for you.
Right.
He clearly demonstrates his inability to separate politics from his duty on wards and boundaries. This vote is the first one that ends up as a 4-3 vote to combine the designated fourth ward and seventh ward, still with four people voting to make that combination, make that change. This represents the only time that that same vote on that same ward with that same issue has not been unanimous, and it is the first vote after Saleen brought up the idea of incumbents being in competition as a result of changing the wards. Now, interestingly enough, and I can't stress this enough, this is also the first meeting and the first, last, and only vote cast by new commission member Cindy O'Brien of the second ward, who was nominated by Councilman Kueke of the second ward to fill a recent vacancy in the wards and boundaries commission. Now, why is this important? Well, it's important for one good reason. O'Brien never attended any meetings. She never knew anything about the issues in front of her. She did none of the math. She didn't, she was involved in none of the discussions. She had absolutely nothing to do with this issue. She was brought in simply for one meeting, to vote, and never bothered to come back again. Exhibit nine in front of you is the Dominion Post article, December 16th, 2014. This would be the article following when council had decided to create their own plan as opposed to going with the proposal in front of them by wards and boundaries. Councilman Bain indicates in there that having had the vote now, that gerrymandering has actually been confirmed by that vote. Saleen is referenced as saying that the prospect of her and GAN's being in the same ward factored into her decision to vote. We need to let that sink in a little bit. Factored into her decision to vote. GAN says she didn't want to run against Saleen. Again, think about that. And Shamberger, God bless her, just said that the proposed wards and boundaries would cut through individual homes, clearly not even understanding the process that was in front of her. Exhibit number 10, I've put in there because I think that it's important that you see that there is a little bit of a history here. Most of us in this room are aware that members on this current council ran as a political action group and took control of city council in that way, so, and they voted pretty much along those lines. The reason I included exhibit number 10 is it is one of the nominating petition pages for council member Nancy GAN's when she ran. And it's in there because if you look at the bottom, it demonstrates the close political ties of Saleen and GAN's. Saleen actually went door to door to get the signatures required to get GAN's on the ballot for her first run for city council. So, you're sitting there and you're wondering, okay, George, why are you talking to us about all this stuff involving the city, where the county is not understanding? I'm here with a very, very simple request. I'm asking the commission to aggressively engage the prosecuting attorney's office to actively investigate the actions of the Morgantown City Council regarding the gerrymandering of the recent wards and boundaries decision to manipulate the outcome of the upcoming election and to prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
We'll respond at the end of the public portion.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your endeavor on this. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public portion? Is there anyone out in the room who would like to speak? No? Sure. Just state your name. You can sit or stand.
I'll stand right here.
Okay.
Guy Panrel, 763 South Hills Drive.
Yes, sir.
Lifelong resident of this county and city and state. I was co-chair on this committee, and I echo Mr. Papandrus's sentiments because, I mean, it was just ludicrous for someone to do that and throw it in your face and say, you know, this is the way it's going to be. And I also would appreciate if you would push this on and let someone look at it and see if, you know, if we're off base, we're off base. If we're not, you know, I would like it to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Panrel. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion. I'll ask if any of the commissioners want to say something. I just want to get one clarification, Mr. Panrel. All you are asking, you're not asking us to look into ourselves, all you're asking is to refer to the prosecuting attorney who's in, under the county commission, and then possibly pass that on to the attorney general. Is that what you're saying? You're not asking us the vote, you're just asking...
I want to make sure that it's quoted that way in the paper. The prosecutor attorney is not under the county commission. She is a co-elected official.
Co-elected official in the, so you're coming before us to inform us about this and that you would like this to be sent? I just want to get a clarification.
Actually, what I'd like, just to stand...
Sure, go ahead.
We're pleading for help. Morgantown is sick. Morgantown has, Morgantown has problems here that we cannot trust them to police on their own because it's an infection. And so, anything that you can do to help us find clarity here, anything that you can do to help us get the, get the way straightened out, I'm not standing here by myself when I tell you that there are a lot of people in Morgantown that are concerned at the direction things are going, and the fact that things aren't even being done legally, and nobody's standing up to make a point of it. So, I'm standing up, making a point of it.
Well, George, that's my, that's my big concern. You got, you got other council people on there, why aren't they speaking out? Why aren't they doing something?
If I could answer that, I would. This has nothing to do with me running for council, but I'm running for council because I'm not seeing anyone stand up. I'm doing everything that one guy can do. So, to answer your question, Commissioner, any process that you have available to you to get us justice, given these facts, and, and again, I reference this, if an investigation were done, there are thousands of pages of documented, documentation on all of this. I've read a lot of it, and I'm not even done. I actually have a FOIA out to the city right now that they've not replied to that will even bring in more information. I'd be happy to make all that available to you. I don't know what mechanisms you may have available, but I know that probably with your assistance, we could get this in front of the prosecuting attorney's office and try to get an investigation here. Any suggestions you have might be, you know, certainly would be handy, but I am asking you for as much help as you can give us in trying to fix this matter because I think that this is, this is critical to everyone that lives in Morgantown. This isn't just, you know, me versus anybody. This is, this is simply something that's happening in Morgantown that just should not be acceptable. Thank you.
Go ahead. Do you have some other questions?
No, you can sit down. I've just been working on, you know, I've been working on legislation on behalf of this commission, and one of the issues was in the paper today about MUB, which is, has been a concern of the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia, which I'm a member of the board and a member of the legislated committee. MUB has customers not only outside of the city of Morgantown, but also has customers in other jurisdictions, other cities, other counties even. And I know Craig Jennings in the commission, Preston County commissions, also concerned about the bill that is being advanced, and was in the paper this morning. And I've written on behalf of the County Commissioners Association, on my own behalf of our concern of, to Amanda Pasan, who's on the rules committee, that could deal with this, that's who we recommended to write to, but I also included copies of the email to the others. The problem with that, and I'm a firm believer in bringing issues down to the local level as much as possible, but it's my understanding that somewhere between three fifths and three quarters of the customers of MUB do not live in the city of Morgantown. And they want to give oversight and rate-making authority to the city council. It just, when you were speaking there, I thought, you know, I was speaking on behalf of the County Commissioners Association that we have a grave concern because there's other utilities that they want to give it to a body that could affect and influence thousands of customers, in some cases, tens of thousands of customers, that the customers have absolutely no influence or say over who finally makes these decisions, that they're not, they're not in the jurisdiction of the city. And so, that, that creates a concern. Now, I read in the paper Tim Strangos commented that, well, they don't, they don't respond to, or they don't, the public service commission aren't elected either. Well, true, but they're, they're appointed by a governor and approved by a senate that is elected by all the people, where the city council is not elected by all the customers or all the people. So, that, it just created a concern for me, and I was going to report about it anyway, so it took this opportunity to report about the status of it right now. It's still in the judiciary committee, but it does create a great concern for, like, prosecuting commission. I think there's also some customers in Taylor County, in the Taylor County commission, that they do not believe that it is correct for a body politic that has such authority over people that are not in their jurisdiction, not in their city. The end result is the whole purpose of this bill is to move those decisions closer to the local level so that local elected officials will have accountability to those individuals. Well, as I wrote to delegate Pasan, and I copied all the other delegates, it fails miserably in the case of MUB, and there's two or three other utilities that are like MUB, in doing that, because it does not really return it to the, to the elected officials. It actually returns it to a body that they have no, no control or no say of, whatever. I bring that up because it sort of, I was going to report it.
Intertwines.
That's my county commission, sort of intertwines with the concerns. All I, all I would say is that I'll read this, and I, in our discussions, we may want to encourage the prosecuting attorney to look at it. That's all we can say at this point.
Yeah.
If I may?
Sure.
There's another issue, too, of being, as I was a downtown businessman for 40 years, all process and all institute taxes that was initiated by the council were taken without any businessman unless you actually owned and lived in city limits. So, that's another factor that might point at least someday toward old rule and being able to address these issues in a proper fashion. And I, too, will, of course, read everything that's been probably been before you.
I'm torn initially because we're two different governmental bodies, and the last thing we want to do is interfere with another governmental body. However, there's been lately a lot of grayish area, and there are two sides to every story, but it's very clear, as I look at the documentation, being a former city council member, that knowing the charter, knowing the rules, there's some real concern that I have by looking at these documentations, especially the interference of the wards and boundary. That is something that needs to be looked into. I want to congratulate you because I think what you're doing is democracy at its finest. One individual, one person, whether there is anything or not, as was stated by Mr. Panrel, I believe it's something that the public needs to be informed of. I agree with the other two members. There doesn't need to be a motion. We will just immediately refer this to the prosecuting attorney, let her decide on actions and what needs to be taken. I believe there are enough questions and concerns that you've brought to us and demonstration that it needs to be answered. And I believe, I appreciate you coming forward and informing us because it does, as I said, it is an elected official in the county, but we're all in this together, and hopefully we can get some really good answers and problems resolved so this can be put to rest one way or the other. Now, I did see you wanted to raise your hand. Did you want to make a, one more comment? I will allow that if you, if that's okay with you.
Yeah. Thank you. And I'll be brief, which almost never happens with me. I'm glad to hear you say what you just said because the county and the city are oftentimes almost indistinguishable.
Right.
To most people. I realize that this is not the governing body for the city, but everything that happens within Morgantown reflects on our county. It reflects on our people, it reflects on our university, it reflects on everything. I've gone around the state a lot and talked about these things. I've been involved in a lot of talks with people around the state, and as you well know, we're the city. Morgantown is the city. Nobody likes to hear that, especially in Charleston, Huntington, Wheeling, those places, but we're it. Everybody wishes they were us. Everybody except us. And that's a problem that we need to fix. We're not proud of us, and with actions and activity like this, it's no wonder that we're not proud of us. I echo the concerns that you have over the MUB thing. I hinted, I hinted slightly at the, at the truck issue that we had here recently. You know, the huge affront that that was to the people was simply because there are a lot of people out there that really had good reasons to not want to see trucks drive through downtown. I honestly have not talked to anybody, including truckers, that wanted to drive through downtown, but not one person in city administration, in city council, I should say, actually ever uttered the word "solution." They all wanted to make a point. They all bragged about, "We're going to pass this to make a point. We don't care what the fallout's going to be." I know, I know Commissioner Callan has been involved in a lot of talks with the DOH. I'm sure that he's probably heard some stories about Morgantown. I know from the city side that the DOH is barely even willing to talk to Morgantown about certain issues other than, like, local little things because of the, of the reputation that we have as just not caring that there were no state or federal laws that allowed them to pass the ordinance. They just did it to essentially... They just did it to, essentially my opinion would be, and it's pretty much from observation, to pander to a small group of political activists. Now, that's not to say that there's not good reasons to move the trucks. Their reason wasn't good, and they didn't follow the chain of command in that. There's a way to change laws. It's not to just define them and pass an ordinance, it's to go down and change the law. It happens all the time. There's nothing that forbids them from doing that. They just simply chose the expedient way and then refused to enforce it so that they wouldn't be made to look like fools.
And I want to get this clear. The three of us do not want to get in a political argument, one way or the other, whether truck or not. All we are doing is referring this because you have brought up enough questions and concerns.
That's all I ask.
Now, turn it over to the prosecutor attorney, okay?
That's all I ask. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you. We'll move forward. Renetta Grants, come on down.
We can get to the. Humboldt County.
Good morning.
Morning, how you doing?
Good. I've got several reimbursement requests.
Good.
That means money back for us, right?
Money for us, money for other people.
Okay.
Okay, first is a grant for MAYSP for the month of February 8/66/54.
Oh, well.
That's okay, you're right, you're right.
Well, I can't sign until there's a motion, so.
The second is for the JABG grant for February 2015, 201941. Evoque Grant also for February 300, I'm sorry, 3,87471. DUI Grant also for February 6,32029. ESG Grant for Bartlett House, RDBIC, Caritas House and Connecting Link, for $19,045.33 also for the month of February. And the Day Report Center Grant also for February 18,12641. And then I have the items from the Governor's Highway Safety Program that have no activity.
That one I heard.
Yeah, it sort of sounded like a head going through a cave. Bobby didn't throw someone through the wall.
Clicker ticket, Department of Highways, Distraught of Driving, Safe Communities.
Are these all reimbursements?
Traffic Safety Data Systems and Alcohol Transfer Funds. These are items of no activity for the month of February.
Okay.
Okay, so you can sign all those.
I move to approve the reimbursements.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes?
Also have the grant.
Here, where do you want me to sign?
I'm sorry.
That one.
The grant applications for the 2016 Community Corrections Grant Program that funds the Day Report Center. They are asking for $310, huh, yeah, $310,000.
That's good.
310,132.
Not for love.
No, no, that's from the, from the state. Our portion, of course, we fund 30% would be 132,913. Now, those funds are probably not what's going to be approved, but that's what they're asking for. This would cover July 1 of 15 through June 30th of 16.
Move to approve the grant application.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you. Good news that we're getting money back. I'd like to see more grants. Okay.
Better thing?
Yeah.
That's on.
I know.
Thank you.
But I like, yeah, it's positive. Okay, we're a little bit behind, but I apologize, but we'll move forward. Representatives of the town of Granville and the Black Bears, come on down. This is great news. Welcome, yeah, wherever you want to be.
Stand there or whatever. Good to see you.
See you.
See you.
I'll see you.
Bye. Oh. There we are. Just.
Did you want to go first, or are you in?
Basically, what we hope to do was to have an update of where the status is. And I know the town of Granville has been actively participating and working very hard to prepare for, prepare for the opening season and all the additional traffic. It always, it always makes me feel a little funny when I read in the, the paper or here on the TV, the city of Morgantown Black Bears or the city of Morgantown Stadium. It's in the city of Granville, or the town of Granville. So I, I wanted to, I just wanted you all to give us an update of where you're at. Why don't you stand over there so they can see you right there? And you can stand right there, it's fine.
Yeah.
Mary, do you want to start, or she's got a prepared statement?
Well, I'm actually. I'll get a connection.
Matthew. I'm Tricia Lewis, I'm a man from the town of Granville. I just prepared a brief statement explaining to the commissioners and to the folks in Montague County, the things that the town of Granville's been doing in preparation of the opening of the ballpark. We've been kind of working behind the scenes, and I think, you know, there's so much excitement in the county about opening day, and we're certainly excited about that also. But I thought it was important for the commissioners and the residents to know the things that we've been working on. Our police department, we're working on some things with the fire department and our street departments, so we'll be ready.
We're actually going to be the second municipality with a, well, Morgantown's got fully paid. We're actually going to come to a condo.
Community.
With partial aid people for now, which will mean we can respond now to medical calls. Because during the daytime, volunteer fire departments are really in trouble. They struggle. And so we're actually going to put four, I'll have three in chief on day shift for now. And because, for prime example, last night the engine rolled out on a cardiac arrest with the driver, which was pretty close.
That was it. That's all you had.
That's all I had.
Just the driver of the engine.
Driver of the engine. That had to be the chief of the fire department.
Wow.
And that's all explained in that letter, the things that we have. We have in progress, and if you have any questions or something, we'd like to answer any questions at one time.
I noticed your signs on your, the roadways up there, they look very nice. I thought that was, you know, it's, I don't want, neither city is not the right word. It looks like part of a, part of the community now very much, rather than just a strip mall.
And I think our city attorney has contacted someone from Black Bears. We've asked to, on our welcome to Granville signs, we're actually going to do an addition on the bottom with their, their blessing.
Oh, great.
Home of the West Virginia Black Bears.
Great.
So we're excited about that also.
We'll wait on your team colors before we do that.
The one that.
Thank you.
Well, you got your team colors, you ran to now.
We say your name and who you are, so Johnny can.
Sure, Matthew Drayer, D-R-A-Y-E-R. And I'm the general manager of the West Virginia Black Bear, I'm sorry.
Already practicing.
But everything, at least on the Black Bear side of things, has just, it's been great the last six months, just the response from the community itself to supporting the Black Bears. Everything from the name, the team, the contest, and just purchases of tickets and just working with our staff and just helping to become, you know, members of the community and part of the community has just been outstanding. So we're very pleased and very thankful for how the community has really welcomed us into, into the area.
Say your name in.
Ernie Galusky, E-R-N-I-E-G-A-L-U-S-K-Y.
He's a homeboy.
I'm a homeboy.
I know that name.
I'm the assistant general manager, and I'll be in charge of operating the stadium.
How do you think it's looking up there?
I think it looks beautiful. I know, most of you probably know that the opening day's been moved from March 17th to April the 10th now. And that's because of the awful weather we got in February. They were on, they were on schedule, but there's not much you can do when we got the snow that we got and the temperature's below zero. So that opening day has been moved to April the 10th. But I think now's when you're going to start seeing a lot of the cosmetic things and the stadium really take place. The turf should be down by today. Not playable, but actually the field will be covered with something other than snow. We'll have green and brown out there. The seats are being installed on Monday. That should be done by the end of the week. You know, a lot of the things you don't see are done now. It's a lot of cosmetic things. So we're really close, guys, and it's, if you go up there and you actually stand in that stadium, there can't be a better view anywhere in West Virginia.
So if you put on a calendar, when is your first, okay, June 19?
June 19.
Okay, I have a feeling there's going to be a run on those tickets already. Because everyone's been asking.
I'll tell you, buy a hundred.
Oh, I tell you, and I wanted to show you, I did receive, I put on Facebook, I got my first sweatshirt. I have a sweatshirt, so, and then everyone's been asking where and how, so I'm, I'm, I'm personally, I said, but I think the thing is, I think the community, when I say community, not just Montague County, but the surrounding counties, that we're going to have our own. We'll have our own, oh. And I'll tell you, people who even traditionally would never go to a ballgame, who are the old pastime, can't wait to come here. And I also look forward being a single A-team for all the different things that go on. You know, your unique, your, your unique events is the best.
Yes, and with minor league baseball, we're more than just a baseball game. We're event, we're family-friendly and affordable. And that's really what part of rich baseball and the Black Bears are all about, just being involved and having a great quality entertainment for, for the, for the folks in the, in the area.
Well, I think it's great for Granville. I think it's great for the county, and we're looking forward, I, I think we're just, I think once we get a little taste of it when it opens on April 10th, I think the excitement will really build, and we're looking forward to working with them. We thank you, and anything we can do.
I couldn't help but get a smile when I saw in the paper, Ben, about the, about the seats.
Seats, that was neat.
Jamie and Bobby could tell you about the ordeal of the seats. This, this commission stood firm that they will have, they will be seats. There won't be no chairs, so I was really pleased by that. Bobby, weren't you happy to see that?
Yep. And I think the seats is just a plus for, for the ballgame.
Oh, yeah.
Overall playing experience.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
A wise decision when it came to the design of the ballpark.
And I haven't been a Pirates fan since 1958. I'm really, really glad that it's an affiliate of the Pittsburgh Pirates. That gives me great joy.
That'd be a great time, especially for just even tourism and everything else that'll bring people to the area.
Well, hopefully, maybe we can bring you back, like, say, in May or June, right before the game, a couple weeks, so we get the excitement going. That would be great. And anything we can do, I mean, I'm sure we're going to be coming to the game on April 10th.
I thought he was going to get us our tickets.
Thank you, oh, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Ron. You, you all ready for the first people to go up that hill? That's what, it's going to be tough until we get the interchange, because it's going to be 2016, 17 before the interchange opens.
Our police department is working on traffic control.
And I want to compliment you. I really like your road signs up there. Several people, I mean, they really stand out, they look really nice. I thought you did first class. I mean, you think roads have, but they are really nice. Did a nice job on that.
We really appreciate you coming, and I want to make sure that if there's anything you need, talk to Bobby.
Call Diane.
I'll talk to Bobby.
But thank you, we look forward to seeing you in the near future.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Let's go to Blackford, yeah. Thank you.
Well, he may listen, but he ain't going to do it.
Yeah, okay, correspondence.
I've been talking to, I've been talking.
Kelly Palmer. Oh, wait, wait, I apologize. Kelly, Kelly, I'm sorry. Kelly Palmer, we have a proclamation from the Court of Counsel. Sandy, come on down when you get a chance.
Yes, yes, well, could you get him a copy of that later?
Sandy Campbell, she's going to write that.
Okay.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm president of QUOTA International and would like to present the county commission with the following proclamation. Whereas QUOTA International Morgantown has been supporting the local community for 89 years by empowering its members to share their time, talent, and resources to meet QUOTA International's service goals. And whereas QUOTA International Morgantown, whose members are inspired by an international initiative known as QUOTA Cares Month, are encouraged to participate in projects that address the needs of their community during the month of March. And whereas QUOTA Cares Month is celebrated by QUOTA clubs all over the world in order to coordinate and participate in community activities during the month of March in an effort to focus on empowering women, children, the deaf, hard of hearing, and speech impaired. Whereas yearly March endeavors promoted by QUOTA International Morgantown continue to support the development and improvement of Montague County by promoting good fellowship and friendship with QUOTA care projects. And now therefore, be it resolved that Montague County Commission do hereby proclaim March 2015 as QUOTA Cares Month in Montague County and encourage all citizens to recognize the significant contributions by this noteworthy organization.
Move to approve the proclamation, is ready.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, passage unanimously.
Would you like to come up and get a picture?
Yes.
Kelly, you want in the picture?
No, I'll take it, thanks.
We're Jim, if you could get that, take the official picture.
Yeah. I don't want to pull a Joe Biden, you know, I could.
Jamie, we'll share pictures, right? Just sharing that picture with me.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Email or something like that. You're not married to.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're not married to Roy Campbell, are you?
Yes, I am.
She's right there.
Don't say anything, you know, but you're right.
I'm also worked at Central National Bank.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I thought that was you.
Yes, I have.
How's it going?
He still has.
Tell him I said hi.
I will do that.
So glad to see you.
Okay, correspondence.
I don't have anything.
Good.
Okay, moving unfinished business, contribution to fund operation of locks.
Tricia Callen, I'm not going to speak to this, but I've been working with Barry Palat and Army Corps of Engineers to set up a system where we can collect funds from different entities and provide it to the Army Corps in order to employ a person to keep the locks open for recreation this summer. To date, we have $4,000 from the Development Authority, $5,000 from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, $2,500 from Granville, $5,000 from Morgantown. We have a pledge from Marion County for $5,000, which we haven't received yet, and they're asking that the commission also contribute $5,000.
Yeah, this, this is the project that I've been working on three or four years now, or five years, it depends on how many years. But this is, this is, this is a unique situation when it was stated that there had to be a government body to contribute, to take contributed funds and to contract with the Corps of Engineers, and we're still in negotiations on the contract on behalf of this commission. And it looks like we'll have the actual contract. But we, we previously passed that we are the, the body, the body politic that can contract with the Corps of Engineers, and we accept to contribute funds to open, to open these locks for special events and all. The, when, when it was thrown out as an issue two years ago, the Corps of Engineers and some, some representatives from Washington said, "Well, that will never happen. You'll never be able to work that out." Well, we have. For first in the United States, where we've been able to work out an agreement where we are actually helping fund the opening of the locks. So I would like to move that we put in that fund $5,000 in support of opening the locks this summer.
Having toured that facility, and also six, seven years ago, I did actually get to go recreationally through the locks. I happily second that motion.
Some properly moved in second. All those in favor for the $5,000, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. And thank you for your work on that, Commissioner Callen, because you've been working on that, like you said, for four or five years. It's also nice when people say it can't be done. We're getting things done in Montague County. Any other unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay, no. Okay, let's go to new business. I'm going to skip the executive session till the end. Okay, update of winter storm. Who wants to do the update?
Okay, I have an email from Mike Wolf. It's pretty long, do you want me to read it?
Can you just, just paraphrase a couple of the highlights?
Diligently with various organizations, fire departments. Chief Lake set up a shelter for those who didn't have electricity. This was a night and day thing for a couple days.
Yes.
All the staff, Mike Wolf, all those people, they did a great job. Uh, there may be a need to come up with just some minimal funding to reimburse for the shelters that were open. And we still are under the state of emergency for about thirty days until we make sure that everything is, um, in order to process reimbursement.
Do you wanna say something?
Well, being one of those that was affected by this, I appreciate your response, particularly with Cheet Lake Volunteer Fire Department, because once we called nine one one, uh, they were there, uh, now I did have to bring my own chainsaw, uh, I'm gonna have to go and buy a couple blades for them, so that they could, it wasn't their lack of equipment, uh, it was just, but, uh, they, it was different, uh, and difficult, particularly, uh, I lived the end of the dead end road, and there were elderly residents on this road we checked on, they did a great job.
Uh, living out in the hinterlands of University Avenue in Evansdale.
Your power didn't go off then, did it?
It just flickered.
Yeah. Mine was out for a day and a half.
There was, there were plenty of snow, that's.
Uh, I just want the public to know, the three county commissioners discussed the issue, and we had put five thousand dollars aside for emergency services for not only, um, and, and kudos to the Cheet Lake Volunteer Fire Department, Tryon Hallic, who went door to door, we also talked with nine one one, and also, I wanna give kudos to the Morgantown Fire Department, who we invoked the, what is that, agreement?
Mutual.
The what?
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid agreement, and they were on call to help us, so, everyone pulled in, but I did want everyone to know that we did put money aside for the volunteer fire departments, and, and Cheet Lake, from what I heard, not only went out, they stocked the food, they went out and found the people, so, I, I can't say enough about our volunteer fire department today.
I would, let me just confirm.
Oh, yes, sure. Five thousand.
The five thousand dollar funding for emergency services.
Second.
Profit moved in second, I forgot that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, great, okay, oh, possible funding for emergencies, good, so we took two at the same time. Request for letter of support, Chamber of Commerce.
Uh, I did not get that this morning, I was supposed to have a letter from, um,
We'll hold that.
asking for support to, for grant, it doesn't cost the commission anything, it's just a letter of support.
Okay.
If you wanna authorize that to be approved, it comes in this week and the grant due next week.
Sure. I'd move to approve a, a letter of support for the Chamber of Congress's application of a grant.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Lease agreement with Frontier Communications. Mr. Doyle, welcome.
Oh. You know, we've been, uh, negotiating about the new phone system and everything, so, this is just a, um, an agreement that they would like to sign to say that, you know, that we're leasing it, and the sixty day out clause is in there, if we don't have the funding, um, to continue, like we always do in every contract. And, uh, we just have it here to, uh, get it signed today.
Is this for the new building too?
This is for the courthouse and the chair tallies, and the new justice center.
Oh, okay.
This is for everything.
Right.
This is the, this is the one you've been working on.
Yes, sir, and, and the price there is, this is just for the phone system, but the internet is also gonna be, um, in with the same, uh, provider. So we are gonna have, um, the new internet service coming in, it's, it's what they call E, E-link or something, but it's supposed to be faster. Nobody should have a problem in the building, in any of the buildings. So if you all like to sign, or you want me to, I just wanna bring your attention and show you that it has the out clauses, sixty day.
Sixty day out.
So we, we need a motion to approve.
And then, if they can sign it, we can send it to them, cause they need a hard copy with the, uh, a letter from the attorney.
On the, on the, well, on the attorney's letter, it says it's a five year contract.
This is, yes, sir.
Okay.
But there is a clause, if funds are not available, that we can opt in.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yeah, no, and I think it's right.
You, you all been, you been around so long, you know what I'm gonna ask before I open my mouth? Okay, so it, you've got, you've got that, uh, funding availability, uh, clause in there as well.
This is where we have the sixty day out.
The sixty day out, okay.
And this is the, what is called the, um, non-appropriation amended to the lease, so this is where we can, uh, send it to each one in writing, and where we get out of it.
Okay, I'd move to approve, who do you want, who do you want to sign?
That's it, President, it's on.
I'd move to, uh, uh, to approve the lease and authorize the President to sign the same.
Second.
And profit moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, do I get free cable?
I would, I would, well, now it's time, if we miss a payment, he goes to jail.
Yeah, hey, hey, step in line, after today's meeting, we're probably gonna be, yes. Okay, reports from elected officials, are there any elected officials who'd like to speak? Hey.
Mark. Wanted to get some information here for, I know for Ellen, cause he was here at one time, but, we actually got our notice from, from the state.
Right.
Our, uh, sales ratio, which is, it's a thing that we've been working on, you know, the county's been working on since the reappraisal. So, as you can see, we're delighted, because we got all the yeses, which means, uh, we have now passed, uh, that part of our monitoring, so that's the sales ratio, which is kinda gets the, uh, big thing off our shoulders right now.
Four year journey, we made it, it's, it's fantastic.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're excited, but you know what, it's, uh, you gotta give all the credit to not just our appraisal staff and our appraisers, but you gotta give all the staff, because everyone had to do their job in order to make this work, to get things done in a timely fashion, uh, spend the extra time to get the reports done, so we can follow it. And, uh, Chuck and them leading up the appraisal unit has been a big plus, and, uh, like I said, for, uh, Chris and Chris, you know, kind of digging in, looking at some of this stuff over the course of time, and we've, what, had them for one year, so, to get a lot of that done in one year, it's been timely fashion, and I could toss out too, to the taxpayers, because of their patience, I know this has been a difficult journey.
I was gonna say, we, we need to praise the, the taxpayers as well, because they, although they were rightfully very upset and had growlings and stuff, which I attended every growl they had, uh, but, uh,
Just as I attended the, uh, hearings down here in twenty twelve.
And you, yeah, you attended the hearings.
And I went to the hearings down, uh, the, the, your meetings down there with State Tax Department, the only time a commissioner showed up, they said, was, uh, was what, last, last? Year, yeah.
Yep, and, uh, so, there, there's been a lot of firsts here, so I definitely wanna praise you and your, your staff, and, and I know Cliff, I mean Chuck. Yeah, Chuck does a wonderful job.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm excited to have the different people that we do have, uh, working for us in the special office, like I said, they work extremely hard, so a lot of kudos to them, and also to the commission and everyone for, uh, their support and understanding of what this was, uh, the, I guess, the, uh, job we had to, to come in on that task. And, uh, to get it done this period, it's great, so next, uh, January, when we attend down in Flatwoods for the hearing, we'll be there to support the other counties now, instead of having to present, so. We're excited.
Well, I'll be there in spirits, and sure, you know, be that spirit.
But I wanted to make sure that, uh, we had a list to share, and, uh, you know, our staff will be out in Morgan District and some of those areas, beginning today or tomorrow, starting, finishing up some value, and getting ready for, uh, sixteen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other elected officials like to speak? How about? Mayor?
No, not really, I just wanted to say that, uh, echo what, uh, Eldon said about, uh, Morgantown Blackbirds, it's a Granville Blackbirds, and, uh, that bothers me a little bit too. Your hair was nice, man.
And I appreciate this day, cause I have to ask your question during the commission.
Yeah, I was planning on, I was gonna say something else, but I didn't want Ben to catch wind of it, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, so there's no more elected officials or department supervisors interested in speaking, great. You wanna talk the good news about, yeah?
We have good news.
Yes.
Uh, most of the time, uh, we do get a, a lot of complaints, I know this time of year that the popples are upon us, and I would appreciate positivity in this, and what I mean by that is that this commission is powerless, it has no leverage, if there were leverage that existed here, we certainly would use it. I assure you, uh, you're looking at the commissioner who lives at the road that was never plowed during this entire winter, if he had leverage, it would have been plowed. That didn't happen, but it has been announced by Bob Beach that we will have a complete paving of Beecher Staveley. And to that end, uh, we'd like to commend everyone for all their efforts, uh, praise the DOH, and even though it will be difficult during the time that, uh, work is done, let's be positive, folks, winter is over.
Thank you. You've been busy, what?
Well, I was just gonna say, here, here, I've, I've worked on it for three years now, I'm glad you, same guy, got it here.
I had to have something to say.
Yes.
I knew, I knew you'd have something else to say.
No, 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 I, I appreciate that, that's not what I'm saying, I, I'm just like, that there was, uh, for three years, there's been, well, I can't do it because of this, or I can't do it because of this, or I can't do it because of this, and, uh, it, it, it's, it's kinda funny that, uh, glad, that they talked about the truck thing, uh,
Okay, I'd like you to stay for a second.
I can't, I can't help but, but, uh, the last time I was down there, talked to them, and we brought them in here, and brought the, brought the, tried to bring the city in to, to address the, the Beechers thing, the, uh, the truck thing was the big, that was hanging over there, so, so I, I, I'm glad they stepped up and did it. We, we got our, uh, bill through, uh, the Senate, uh, thirty-four zero, uh, it was, it was clearly, uh, an establishment of, uh, of the commitment of the senators, and more, more so, it was an understanding, they had a full understanding, unlike certain Democrats in the House, they had a full understanding of what we were doing and how, why it was being done, to fix the deficiencies in the TIF statute, so, uh, I, I'm proud to say, uh, that it passed thirty-four zero in the Senate without any amendments, so it goes on to the governor. And since it was a governor's bill, an already negotiated bill with the governor, it should be signed, and we'll be addressing what we have to do to pass, to do the recalculations, uh, of, of the base. I've just been working on so many different, uh, different things, I already talked about the other one, the main one I wanted to talk about with, with, with the mug thing, so, I think I'm gonna stop right there, uh, I, there's, there's other, the homestead exemption, it has gone by the wayside, I talked about that last week, they're gonna put it into a study, uh, I did, I did try to, uh, address some of that, uh, some alternatives, and, uh, I will, uh, with the commission's continued authorization, take those alternatives that we've discussed in the past, uh, to the, uh, study group. And, uh, there was another, uh, issue down there that I, I'm wanting to follow up on, uh, and I think the two commissioners, either one of you, if you have a problem with it, let me know. Senator Maynard, from, I believe, was Wayne County, it was, they were having a major problem because they were, didn't have the, they didn't have a tow policy anywhere near, and it had a lot of the problems, and, uh, I felt that the way he was approaching it was not proper, in the fact that he was trying to pass a tow policy for the entire state. But I felt that there needs to be changes to the statute, so, unless there's an objection from one of the commissioners, I would, I would, I would work with Senator Maynard to revise, uh, to work on revising the statute, so the tow policy can be better utilized in the other fifty-four counties.
Great.
That's all I have right now.
Hey, Gary, could you go get Kay Murray, cause I'd like her to be in, she's right outside. While I was doing that, when we were talking about bills, and people said, well, what is the county commission doing, I, I think the people need to know, we, we had learned yesterday that our bill that we had written with the Chamber of Commerce died, um, in committee, that was the, uh, one sent to help pay for home rule in the sense of paying for the roads, so, we tried, and, you know, I do want everyone to know that we did try and do that. The second thing is, uh, this commission has been very proactive, which I'm really glad about, uh, for those of you who don't know, real quickly, there were two bills, and I have to give a great deal of credit to Joe Statler, um, he crossed, he could, well, he was able to find out about House Bill twenty-four seventy-eight, which was also the same as Senate Bill two eighty-eight, um, he first initially contacted, um, Ed Hawkins, then contacted us, so it wasn't a Democrat or Republican issue, it was a Mon County issue, he was able to put an amendment in barely, with us working the other nine counties who have a pilt, um, that we gotta vote forty-six, forty-four to take out that amendment. However, on the Senate bill side, it was passed through, however, last night I received a phone call, a little bit concerned, they put it on the agenda to read for the third reading on the floor, but they added something with possible amendments, that was not there before. So we don't know what's gonna happen today, that could be added back in, I can tell you that the governor's aide, I listened to the, uh, I'm very proud of Mon County, because I listened to the, uh, hearings, and the aide, the governor's aide made it clear that there was concern from Montague County that was organizing a grassroots effort from the other counties, who was able to stop this from going, so I was very proud of the citizens. However, he, the aide put it back on the representative, saying, well, if you want the money, it's there, so he was trying to put some pressure, and after seeing this, I'm just a little concerned about that. The third thing I wanna say is, people can say, well, how's it going over and using, you know, everyone being checked in, and this thing surprised me, they said, oh, well, pocket knives don't mean anything, I wanna show you this, I think the public needs to see this, this was found in a wallet by someone who refused to give it up at the time, and I don't even, this is called a credit card, I didn't even know that knife, is that what you would call it? And this was found by the scanner as it went through, and the person said he didn't have anything, we're very fortunate he found this, but this is the kinda things that are going in, and that's why we're doing it, and I just wanted to see it, I never even heard of this, but again, um, we'll have a report in a couple weeks of how it's going. Real quickly, recycling, eight hundred and fifty people, eight hundred and fifty people went through six thirty square cubic yard bins in a four hour period. Uh, we had some minor glitches, but we'll, we'll resolve that, um. The two issues I wanna put together finally, we are honored today, because we do have Kay Murray here, and from what I've heard, at her age of thirty-nine, she may be retiring.
Forty-nine now.
Forty-nine now, and, and, and not only has she been an institution of this community, but I wanna personally say thank you, because there's been one issue that you've been handling on the last couple weeks, that I'm thrilled about, and that's what I wanted to show. Whether stupidity or not, I put on Facebook, you try and organize all the different potholes that are in the county, write me emails. I have over a hundred emails, but I wanna show these two pictures to give you an idea, this is Route one hundred, it's caving in, and it's falling in. Uh, you know, there's places like this all over, and Kay has been adamant, and I'm really proud of you, to say, when you did the interviews, the number one item had been fixing the roads, and with the Dominion post saying twelve hundred bills, only four were related to it, of which two were written by Mon County, there's a major concern, uh, the concern being from the county, as I just got interviewed statewide, was because, one, we're getting numerous calls of people very concerned about trying to sell their house, can't get there with the roads, business is going down because people aren't driving or going as far. And the third, trying to bring business in, I know all three of us are working real hard on that, Mon County is successful, and we wanna continue to grow, but this is one major stumbling block, and the reason why, Mayor, I wanted you here is, I wrote down, also on Facebook, people didn't send me this, they sent me this, two, three errors, I wanted to write, County Road nineteen-six, Old Taylor Town Road, I first thought might be the worst of all, there's no road left. Route one hundred, someone told me literally, it's about fifty feet where they saw a submarine come up, because it was that big that there is a pothole there, but the one that I wanna work on, and the three of us, we have to do something immediately, River Road, Dupont intersection, emergency situation. It has now dropped almost eighteen inches, my concern is you have the school buses, you have the parents going to Two, Skyview, and, uh, Westwood, we have a problem there, to a point that it's at emergency situation, I don't know what to do, and I first was wanting you, cause I thought it was in the city, it is, and I guess it's right outside the city limits, do we have any suggestions, if we need to call Ray Urs immediately, they need to go out there, cause the situation is that bad, and I believe.
We can call Ray Urs to say, you know.
Okay, we will call, and I believe you even. Okay, we will call, and I believe you even had the house, pictures of the house that's falling down there.
That's been, yeah.
That's been falling down, it's just fallen down some...
But it's gone, literally, in the last two weeks. Last two weeks it's gone down, so...
This, this storm, I mean, that, that's what, that's what causes this running water, it moves the ground.
But I do want to say, you know, thank you for Kay, what I'm gonna do is give this to Ashley, make Xerox copies to send it to the State DOH and to Ray Urs, and continually do this, because it's everywhere, and my concern is if we wait four to six weeks, it may be too late. I mean, literally, I mean, I said, I saw four hobbits come out of one hole, you know, looking around, so I'm very worried about this, and hopefully we...
But I, I agree we need to do something, but we're gonna, we're gonna make it clear that all we can do is make phone calls.
Right, we'll make phone calls and send the letters.
We have no jurisdiction or authority.
And we're gonna try and work with them to try and see how we can help the situation, and hopefully, and Ray Urs has been very helpful. Let's say, he can only do so much if he doesn't have the money and the equipment, but we do definitely want to work with him, and just tell the community that we are moving forward on that. We have to go into executive session for about ten minutes, um, pursuant to six-nine-eight-four, section nine. Is there anything else that needs to be said? Yes?
I'd like to say, if anybody wants to buy a radio, I've got one for sale, because if Kay's not gonna be on it, it's not any good.
And also, and for those, and for what you've been doing for Jim Stallings, I want to thank you. I did receive a phone call from a sister, we got that worked out, and again, our heart, thoughts and prayers with Jim, everyone who's been listening and, and taking care of it. I just want to thank you, because we always go on your radio programs, promote us, it's about time we thank you for what you've done for this community.
Thank you so much.
And, and we have a videotape, so you can show your granddaughter just at her birthday, that you do, do things for the community.
That's right.
Can I have a motion for executive session for ten minutes?
I'd move to go to executive session under six-nine-eight-four, nine.
Second.
Okay, so profit moved, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go back in regular session?
Move to return, uh, totally fit, to go out of executive session.
Second.
It's been profit moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes, we're now out of executive session, do I have a motion for, make sure, do you have anything else for us? Good.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Profit moved in second, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.